Press that button.
Wait a minute, Jim. Oh, there. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Commissioners' Meeting of April 11, 2022. I will call when the meeting were to order. For those of you who would like to stand up with us and say the Pledge of Allegiance, well, feel free.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for March 14, 2022?
So moved.
Do we have any discussion or corrections or omissions? Seeing none, I call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, tonight with the informational reports are in your packet that we have the one for the District Attorney with the annual report, Violence Prevention Partnership Annual Report, and Community Corrections Center Release from Memo from the Sheriff's Office. Jim, is the sheriff going to speak on that one?
He's more than welcome to if he'd like.
Do you need to speak on that, Kevin, for the Community Corrections Center Release Memo?
I'll give you an overview, yes.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
So I would say it's something to see if there's any appetite so that I can either work a little harder with Jim to see if this goes or not. So I'll answer any questions you have. I mean, that's basically the overview. We're in the real beginning stages at this point.
I have a question, and then I'll take seat. Do we receive money on that from the state? Was that part of our monies for jail? Did it include with the running of the community corrections building?
Yes.
So would that be in jeopardy if we?
Right now it is. Right now it is because there's no way I can open that building.
Right.
It took 10 people to run it.
Right.
And even on a scaled back version, I'd probably need about five people. Now, just to give you an idea of what we're going through now with the fact that we've got vacancies, since about mid-January, I've had people assigned to doing hospital details on various inmates that have serious medical issues. And we've tried to get some of them out, but some of them have been crimes that we just cannot release. That's tying up additional staff. So I know it's off-topic, but we just can't spread ourselves any thinner to open that up.
Commissioner Gordon, did you have a question?
Yeah, it was similar. I just wondered how it affected our requirements for community correction.
It's not going to affect it anymore than it's affected right now, as I understand it. You know, I'm still meeting with the staff to try to figure out, but I think we're going to miss our mark. Jim's told me about $900,000. And, you know, main pre-trial will eat up about a third of that. And then we've got a couple of half positions that we might be, we can attribute to that. But I can't find anything else I can connect to it.
What, we're required to spend 30%?
Yes.
Which is $900,000.
Okay.
It's an ongoing concern.
Yep.
But there's not an easy fix to it.
Commissioner Clodia?
This is not a question you need to answer tonight. Of course, it involves Alex, Jim, the rest of us as well, I guess. I can't help but notice the need to satisfy our insurer as part of this possible transaction. And so I'd just like to know if that becomes a roadblock.
And I've told them that it was at one time, but the circumstances might be different here. I don't know.
Well, my idea is either it's not a roadblock or we need a different insurance company.
So what is your pleasure to, you know, to allow this were to happen? What you're standing on?
Sheriff, any idea, and maybe this is too preliminary, that you haven't had conversations about what they would pay for the space?
I don't believe that's in my purview. I think it's your purview to figure that out, you know. I will say one thing I left out. I wanted a, similar to the City of Portland, a year-to-year because I would like to open up community corrections at some point. And the longer it stays shut down, then the more we forget about it. They wanted to go three to five years. So we, one of my staff members mentioned that what if we went three years, max, and at two years, roughly, year and a half, two years, when our staffing is hopefully better, that we start looking at it? And we would share part of that with the idea on year three, we'd take it over fully back to the CCC. But again, when it's talking about money, I think that would be up to you folks to decide what that looks like. I haven't talked money at all.
Okay, thank you.
I have told them that there might be some sort of a financial lease, but that's it.
So Jim, what are your thoughts on this as far as doing a lease or an MOU?
And I've thought for two years now, it's a shame that we have such an asset vacant. And we tried to work with the City of Portland, and we all know how that turned out in terms of our insurance carrier stepping in and taking a hard line. And there's so much need for bed space around here, and it sounds like the probation who has a good idea of transitioning these individuals into our region. And so it really comes down to crafting up a lease, one, getting it by the risk pool, which will depend on what level of liability MDOC wants to kick on. And two, what that number is on the square foot. I mean, there's a couple of ways. We can ask for a square foot cost monthly, or, you know, I even thought of, if we can't come up with $900,000, we just ask for forgiveness of that. You know, if they want our building, give us forgiveness on the delta between $900,000 and what we can come up with. That's worth the way to go, too. So there's a couple of ways of skinning it. We just really haven't got in-depth docs until we got to the seniors meeting.
I will say, I would concur with that idea of using the difference as a forgiveness. I mean, I don't know what that value looks like compared to what you would ask for, but...
Commissioner Clodia, and then Commissioner Gordon.
So just two quick questions. MDOC, I assume they have pre-release centers somewhere? And maybe you could give us the nickel tour of where those are located and how many inmates you think they accommodate? And is there any other county that is doing this kind of pre-release, release transition programming?
The one I know of existing, actually, there's two. Waldo County Jail, if you remember right, under the Board of Corrections. That sheriff took it upon himself to make his small jail pre-release center for both state and county. I think that's still operating as that. It's very small. There's transitional housing. There is one in Bangor. Major Courts and Lieutenant Wilmot went up and checked it out just to see, you know, I didn't want a place that looked out of control, if you will. So they looked at it, seemed to be, worked pretty well. So they could envision it at the CCC. They've been looking for a place. If they don't get this place, they'll find something somewhere in Portland.
So who's operating the Bangor facility?
DOC, Probation and Parole.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Gordon?
I was just wondering, may we require their expenditures to be included in our $900, million, $900,000 calculation?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get to $900,000 in meeting with my staff today.
Well, essentially, it's the forgiveness of it.
Yep.
So would we recommend with that? Would Jim continue on maybe with the contract or an MOU, or we start some discussions?
I'd say we don't have any, I didn't hear anything that makes me think we should be starting this right now.
Okay. So Jim, you can continue and get into some discussions? Okay. Okay. Comments from the public? Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will continue with the consent agendas. Neil, you want to make?
Passage, yeah. Second.
Seeing that there's no discussion, I call for vote. Is all those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to ARPA, we're business. Jim, I am going to turn this over to you, which is item 22-033.
This concept with their police departments and going into it together. As we relayed onto the Commissioners, Travis and I have been working with the three towns probably since, what, July of last year on the concept. They came to us and they asked us to hold the contract for this work to be done, as we would be appointed on the contract that the services would be carried out in the communities themselves. And we were open to that. And we went so far, and then we encouraged them that to really make this work and to allow them to ease it into their budgets, we would use this funding, ARPA funds, County ARPA funds, to get it off the ground and allowing over three, four years them to fully integrate the contract price of the service into their respective budgets. Hence, the application through our ARPA program. When the application was put in, though, they actually went away from the concept of hiring a third-party nonprofit within our region to do the work. And they thought they would hire the individuals themselves and have them as town employees. So fast forward to February, we introduced this application to the Commissioners. And the Commissioners thought, I don't want to speak for you, but what I took from it was that you were accepting of the concept and the application. However, you asked us to go back to the three towns and look at a different way or a different model in doing the service. And that largely was, one, you wanted to see a nonprofit within our region do it so that we can expand off from that model to other regions within the county. So deviating away from the towns, hiring an individual. And two, you wanted to see a game plan on how this is going to be sustainable. Because the Commissioners, ever since we received ARPA funds, have been very fearful of projects that create cliffs. And this could very easily create a cliff if not done correctly. So we went back. The towns were more than amenable to shift the model from individual they would hire to an RFP that we would send out, seeking service, services being provided by a nonprofit. They also worked with me to develop a game plan on working towards the cost, the initial cost being over four years shut off to them. And so in your packet this evening, I show that the county takes the lead, and we are upfront this year with a single caseworker, all 100% paid by County ARPA funds. But then when you get into year two, three, four, and five, that 100% ARPA funds then turns into 75 county, 25 towns, 50/50, 25/75, and then ultimately zero County ARPA funds and 100% with the towns. In talking with the town managers just last week, they felt very confident that they have full support by their police chiefs and also their elected officials, and that this would be no issue through this forward through next year's budget process and the following years, making sure that this is fully funded after year four. They are actually so gung-ho that the three towns this week have this item before their town councils to have conversations with them, to see approval from them, because they're very eager to get this type of service out in the streets as they see a real need up in their region. So this is before you this evening. We are asking the Commissioners to fund through the use of ARPA $365,000. And that takes care of the county's contribution towards the service through year one through four. And as I stated, it does wean off as the years tick by, but we feel as though this has been a good process. Travis and I have had great conversations with the town managers and the police chiefs within these three towns since July of last year. And I have utmost certainty that they're all gung-ho, and this is going to be a project that's going to be sustainable over time. So with that, I will stop talking and go to the other questions.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yeah, at what point does the contract transfer to a funded entity and who holds the entity?
The county will continue to be the entity because the model that I see being created would be a model that can be expanded. There are other private, I shouldn't say private, there are other towns that have their own police service, as well as our sheriff's office. This model is really creating a service for three towns, but we're going to create the model that can be expanded so that we can jump into different regions of the county. And we will be the point person on the contract.
Paul, and I guess maybe this goes to the sheriff on this, are there funds out there for the, through the state or through federal government for going on to a program like this?
Actually, over the weekend, I was looking at one grant fund through the Department of Justice that would fund this as well. I was kind of looking at it from our perspective as well. It is something that's needed, but there's a lot of things that are needed, so it's kind of trying to figure out where that fits in. But there is federal funding.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clodia?
I don't know who to answer this. My question has to do with the ARPA funding and the possibility of expansion. Is there a, is the grant that we're going to approve, can that be amended and increased or supplemented by an additional grant from next year's funding or funds that are still available in fiscal year '24?
It can. We only have two magic dates ahead of us here, and that is December 31, 2024. We have to have all $58 million allocated to projects.
And spent by when?
December 31, 2026.
All right, so we've got some time. If it turns out that there are other jurisdictions that...
The window just gets a little shorter on them.
Yep, we'd have to probably rewrite this contract, but we know how to do that.
Well, I think the, we would probably have individual contracts. The tri-town would have their contract if another entity came, say, a Gorham, Wyndham came to us. That would be a separate contract. So we would have individual contracts based on region of service.
Commissioner?
Just very briefly, I think this is a great example of an opportunity for real, a first step towards regionalization on an important issue, and I think we should support it. And in that regard, I will move the motion so we can continue any discussion.
Second. Is there any other further discussion? Commissioner Gordon?
Yeah, I support this, and I would hope that the county looks at this as an item that they would budget in its own budget in the future. So when we run out of ARPA funds, we plan and set aside some funding where we can begin as seed money to start programs that would work in this way.
Commissioner Cowan?
I mean, I agree with what's been said about this being a good first step to regionalizing a service that I think we need throughout the county. We need to take the advantage now, use the money, use the resources that are available to us, and we'll, I hope we can look forward to making it permanent or, you know, developing, develop funding sources. ARPA is not likely to extend much, much more than we already know that it is. And I don't like the idea of a program that just falls off a cliff when we get to the end of that. But I think this is one that will probably prove itself to be sufficiently useful that we'll be willing to fund it in some fashion afterwards. So I'm looking at this as a first step toward a permanent, a permanent program.
Commissioner Clodia, would you have any thoughts?
I favor this 100%. It does seem to me like, you know, the description of how we might expand it is similar to the agreements that we work our way through with providing law enforcement to communities on a county, on a community-by-community basis. And that's a reasonable way to do it for a while, but I think we might at some point start thinking about recognizing this as a county project that, and that is a county project that needs, you know, more centralized operation support and that kind of thing, and just an availability for those towns that want to participate on some basis that they could predict an advance.
My thoughts on this is I will support this, but I would also like for the sheriff and his command staff to look into that grant, you know, that he just spoke about, that there are some county funds, because I really think it's a big issue out in the Royal area. And I really think that we, you know, that we should do something up in that area. So Sheriff, would you think that's something that we could start, you know, what to look into with the grant, you know, that you talked about, or to get it maybe something, you know, up in the Royal area? Or...
Yeah, I looked at the requirement over the weekend. I think that it's out far enough that we could do something with it. It has been something that we've been thinking about as well, maybe even rolling in with Wyndham on that.
Okay, yep.
There is a need, but it's just like, there's all kinds of needs there. So I was trying to figure out which is the best. So yes, we could do that.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I call for a vote. Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With Jim, I guess with the next one is yours, with two, the 22-034 with the ARPA second reading of a tier-one with projects, the applications.
I am going to invite Sandy Warren up to present to the Commissioners on this. As the Commissioners are aware, back in March, you had the first reading, and this is coming before you.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Commissioners. So as Jim mentioned before you, tonight is the action plan for round one tiers one and two for the ARPA funding. Before we can award the funds, however, we do need a final vote and motion by the Commissioners to either approve, omit, or recommend the funding that's provided to you by the ARPA Advisory Committee as well as the county manager. Once this is approved, we'll submit this as part of our performance plan to Treasury in July of 2021, uh, '22, sorry. Wrong year. Happy to take questions about it. Like to hear your feedback in terms of recommendations for funding.
Commissioner Clodia?
I used to drive people crazy in budget time, sorry. Not so much here.
What do you mean, "used to"?
Yeah.
Well, that's a good point right there. Am I reading this, we had originally allocated or reserved or set aside or something, was it $11 million for, out of county government, out of county expense operations, whatever had happened to itself over the last two years? $11 million for outside groups to apply and justify use of ARPA funds for their purposes?
Yes.
And if I'm reading this, can you tell me, we have a total of recommendations of actually quite a bit less than that, like two, almost 2.4 million less, right? We have a total...
Correct.
Recommendation from the committee of 8.7. And the county manager in his review has found some additional issues, and that the actual number, is it, grows to, is it like 7.1 million? That's about 65%, maybe two-thirds of the money we have available. We made available, right?
Yes.
So my first question is, I assume, I hope that rolls over into whatever we might do next after this, whatever that number ends up being, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it, if I remember right, we're looking at about $26 million in round two? And now we're talking about rolling over, if we use the manager's budget, we'd be rolling over something like $2 million, right? So we'd be up to $30 million in unallocated funds. And those funds would, we haven't looked at year two very closely yet, but I assume there's some expense related to county issues that would be allocated out of that. But do you have any order of magnitude sense of what we're getting for approvable projects that are ready to proceed within the timeframes of the, of the ARPA requirements for allocation and then expenditure?
Yes, so we'll be looking at the remaining tier-three and four projects that were submitted to us back in January of 2021 with this round one. So we have round one tiers one and two, which are the main priorities that can get out quickly. And then three and four are the priorities that can take a little bit more time. And so what we would like to do, the ARPA committee would like to do, is look at those, do another internal review, have applicants submit us plans for sustainability and one-time expenditure justification, and then we'll internally review those to make sure that they do meet your criteria for, that the county Commissioners gave to me. And then we would review them further and allocate the remaining funds that we have here today, and then any from round two, once it's received.
So in the, can you give us the 10-second description of why something is a three- or four-tier project?
Yes, so those are projects that couldn't immediately get funding out into the community, that it would take them a little bit of time to launch that into their existing program. Maybe it wasn't going to start until summertime, like an educational program, for example, or the permits weren't ready now, but they might be ready in a few months, that sort of thing.
So are those more speculative than the ones that we're looking at today?
Yes.
At the first hearing, I asked you about the predominance in the housing allocations of elderly projects. Am I guessing correctly that the theory behind elderly projects is that they address an ARPA need because new housing coming online for elderly persons would cause a transition in housing use so that impoverished persons and homeless persons would somehow benefit from a change in housing supply? Is that the theory that leads to a nexus to ARPA? Or is there a direct nexus between ARPA and elderly housing?
So I would say that elderly housing would be directly impacted by COVID-19. So yes, the nexus would be that a senior has more likelihood to contract it and would have been impacted greater based on what happened during the pandemic. So I think seniors in generally, in general, have been impacted unproportionately to other folks because they were required upfront to not be able to be as stringent, or were not able to be as free in the community as everyone else, right? Like myself or someone else that may not be as at risk or susceptible of getting sicker faster and possibly dying from the disease. So I would say in that respect, in that caveat, yes, they were disproportionately impacted by COVID. Also, people are, seniors typically on fixed incomes. The price of everything going up because of COVID also impacted them financially. So I would say generally speaking, yes. The other nexus is housing in general, just building... Just building housing, getting more units built is also a nexus to the funding. Senior housing is, it's tricky, because it's the easiest to truly get built in our community. It's a lot harder to do families. And I think that's a barrier, and the state has some legislation going through and trying to help promote and push towns to give them technical assistance for their zoning to increase affordable housing for everyone.
Well, yeah, I'm aware of that. I wish them well. The, okay, so, but there's, all right, I think I understand what you said. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from commissioners on this? So do you need a motion on this, Jim?
Yes, please.
I need a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendations of the county manager regarding the projects for our tranche one funding of ARPA projects as set forth under the county manager recommendation. Call them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'd like to propose an amendment. One more time, please.
So I call for a vote, and then we go back to make, to do Jim's amendment?
Well, if there's...
If you do a vote, you can't make a amendment.
Right, right.
Okay, right. So Jim, what is your...
So my proposed amendment, and I would make the motion, is to add back, and the manager has recommended that the Preble Street food hub be reduced from the recommendation of $2.5 million to $1.5 million, and simply moving to restore that to $2.5 million as an amendment to the manager's recommendation.
Do we have any discussion on that?
You need a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a second. Do we have a second on that? Not hearing a sec...
I'll second it.
Okay. Now we can have some discussion on that.
I'm glad to speak to it and tell you why.
Okay, yeah.
And I've discussed this with Jim already. Shockingly enough, I didn't change his mind. This, I was impressed by the chair of the advisory committee in the way that he was, he was not giving up on what the advisory committee had recommended be done with this project. And frankly, this particular issue has made me look much more closely at the recommendations than I probably would have otherwise, because I was, I started thinking back to what we said six months ago and a year ago, when this became a likely opportunity. And what we said is we wanted infrastructure. And we did not want to subsidize some kind of programmatic undertaking that would fall off a cliff when the money ran out. And of course, as soon as this became available, I think we all got a share of importuning emails about, you know, subsidizing daycare, subsidizing various other very worthwhile enterprises and opportunities, including for people who are very needy and could use the help. But those all did not meet our stated intention that we want to make a substantive change in circumstances to the extent that we're able to by investing in community assets that are going to continue and be valuable for the foreseeable future. So if you remember that discussion while you're looking at this list, it's kind of a discouraging list. There's not much there that does that. There's money for senior housing, and we know that that's a worthwhile thing, and it's not likely to disappear in three years, so it kind of meets that criteria. But this particular project, the hub, changes in order of magnitude for how food is delivered to impoverished people and people in need. And it's an expensive project, because the undertaking is a large undertaking. I did spend some time in the last couple of weeks trying to run down what I thought were the usual suspects when it comes to other funding. What I've learned is that the city of Westbrook is not doing this kind of funding. The state of Maine has not released funding opportunities that would seem to fit other than something we already know about, which is an application to the, I think, the Department of Agriculture. And the city of South Portland, which actually, you may remember, felt like they had taken a substantial hit in how much they got for ARPA funding because of their participation in the county's CBVG program, and financially what they did. They actually are considering an award, and I heard from Max Swan, after I asked, he said they had actually survived the first cut in South Portland, even though their funds are... I will also say, the people of Preble Street have been very clear that they deeply appreciate a million and a half, two and a half million, this is, this puts their project into the realm of possible and practical to achieve. And I also will frankly say, I think that it was always implicit in a lot of what has happened, that they, if things don't go this particular way tonight, or even if they do, I suppose, they may need to come back next year to re-explain their need and proceed with that. So that's, I really do think that this is the strongest application that's on the table, frankly, by far. It's also one of the more expensive. The other thing is, I was not going to do this except, and I have no criticism for Jim and his thinking on this, I mean, he's very capable, but I know, and I think we all know, that the, that the program that was initiated by the federal government about two years ago, which basically subsidized poor people through the tax system so that over half of the children in the United States rose out of their poverty levels, that program is ended. So we're back where we were. And that means poverty rates in southern Maine, probably 14% to 17%. The food service demand has blossomed beyond anybody's understanding of how it could happen. There's now something like 1,500 meals a day, and those are predominantly going to poor people. And many newer mountains as well. Upshot is, driving those costs down by something like what this accomplishes in terms of costs will make it much more likely that more of that need will be met. I did ask why the city of Portland did not have a check on the table, and that may happen again, that may happen, I'm told, in the future, but at the moment, there's primary reliance on their operating budget to help pay the operating cost of this facility, even though it would be located in South Portland. So that's my pitch. You know, I think we should fund it today, because finished business is always good business, and we are, we are very well short of having high-quality programs that meet our initially stated objectives to fund. So that's why I made the motion.
Then I'd like to ask with Jim, regarding your cut. Can you explain your cut?
Really, before I start that, the reason, as the commissioners know, we've had a tremendous amount of interest in our program. We thought $58 million was going to be hard to spend, how we are going to spend it, and I think just from seeing the initial interest of receiving over 100 applications, pre-applications in $88 million of projects, we understood that now we have no problem spending $58 million. So the interest is out there. We do have knows that a number of individuals or entities opted not to go first round, and they have their eyes on the second round or on future money. And so with that interest, knowing that interest that's out there and the projects that are out there, I kind of had a different lens when I looked at projects coming forward. When it comes to Preble Street, there is no denying that the project that they're doing is phenomenal. It is what the region needs. It's filling a huge hole that we have, and it's not just Preble Street, it's multiple entities within that building using that commercial kitchen space. So a very, a very good project. It really comes down to, it was the first wave of funding, funding $2.6 million, knowing the number of projects that we could have out there that are going to seek funding. And knowing that Preble Street had an application into South Portland, and just for correction purposes, South Portland was successful in getting the bump. They ultimately got $13 million, and I think they floated about $6.5, $7 million out in an application process. So they went from $2 million initially after about $13 million.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, they were, they were successful. So I knew that they made a request there. But a large reason why I moved in the direction that I did is that we had the city of Portland last fall ask for $5 million for their homeless shelter. The commissioners allocated $3 million. We had Tedford House out of Brunswick for their new shelter up in the Cooks Corner region, they asked for $3 million, and we allocated $1.5 million. And so we have those, those are two comparable projects to the Preble Street. And I'll tell you, reducing Tedford's house down to $1.5 million put the onus on them to go fundraising and knock on doors for another $1.5 million. And so, you know, it was not an easy go for them, having that 50% cut in their request. And so I used that same rule of thumb with the Preble Street application. Instead of funding it 100%, since we didn't fund the Portland or the Tedford House applications 100%, I used the reasoning to go down to $1.5 million for Preble Street. So those are really the reasons behind where I landed. There is always round two, absolutely. And again, the projects are phenomenal projects, it's just, so is in the Portland shelter, and so is in the Tedford shelter. It's just kind of spreading, trying to spread the money as far as we can with all the worthwhile projects that we have originally. So thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Neil, and then Steve.
Thanks. So I would follow Jim's comments. I think the project is, is definitely needed, it's worthwhile, and it's going to be a fantastic addition to what we have now. But we funded that request at 60% of their initial ask. We all in this room know that they're going to come back, and we are, we're going to provide them with some more funds if we don't approve the $2.6 million here before. And I think it's our responsibility and our duty to spread the wealth, for lack of a better term, over these very, very worthwhile projects. And the $1.5 million that we, that we award to Preble Street will allow them to move forward. It's not going to stall their project whatsoever. And a year from now, when we sit at this table again to allocate our second tranche of money, they'll be at the, near the top of our list. And so they're probably, and that project, and I have no idea for certain, but I don't think that the completion of that project is going to happen, and it's going to be solely dependent on that additional $1 million. So for all those reasons, I think that, that we support the project, we will fund the project, but I think we should fund it at what the county manager has recommended, and I share those, those points.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yeah, do we have any idea how much Preble Street has raised to match what we've, the original $1.5 million?
I think I see Mr. Swan in the audience. I think he can answer that.
Yes, yeah. Mark, would you like to step up?
We, some of you may know, we were about two-thirds of the way through a big capital campaign for a new shelter and a center for trafficking victims, and a new shelter for women when COVID hit. So we stopped the capital campaign and then restarted it later, and we added another shelter to that capital campaign. So we raised a ton of private money and ended last fall with a $15 million successful capital campaign. And this is not part of it. The board calls this the non-campaign campaign, because we cannot go to the same, the same donors so soon after this big capital campaign. However, in about six months, we've raised, to answer your question, 2.4 million in private money, which frankly astounds me, from October to now, at that amount. I will also say, in complete honesty, we have no pending private fundraising requests out there. No foundations, no corporations, no individuals. Like I said, we've gone to the well really deeply very recently. So I think our private fundraising is, is maxed out at 2.4 million. We did take a $2 million mortgage out that, you know, we'll live with. I'd love to not take more debt on. And you're, you're right, we have a $500,000 pending with the city of South Portland and a $400,000 with the State Department of Agriculture. I think they have $188 million worth of requests for $20 million bucks. So it's a long shot to get that state money. And I think that's all the revenue I can speak to.
Okay, well, thank you.
So I guess, how much are you in a, how much are you not making your budget or making the requirement?
How much, excuse me?
Well, we're asking, what's the cost of the project?
Yeah, $8 million.
And how much of it has you raised?
2.4.
Okay.
And then the $2 million mortgage. We purchased the property right around the time of your last meeting, so we've closed on it, and that's why we needed to take that mortgage out. But now for the construction piece, we're trying to raise about another four.
You've raised four, if you count the 1.5 at a minimum, that we're going to...
That's right.
...contribute to the project, right?
That's right.
Plus $2 million in debt.
That's right, yeah. So if everything comes in, we're at my read on this, we need to, if everything comes in that's out there, we need to raise another $850,000, plus perhaps another million, if your, your allocation is 1.5, plus the $2 million debt. So there's a lot of different ways to slice it, but yeah, we're about halfway there.
Is it possible, Mark, that South Portland will come through with its second tranche? $500,000 now, $500,000 a year from now?
I suppose, I'm certain that's possible. You know, it's all unshot at territory, just as it is for you all, too. But I will say, South Portland's been fabulous to work with, going through the zoning process and all that. You know, we've, we've got the, we've gone through the planning board with them, so that's really good news. Thank you.
If I could just...
Yes.
I believe cities and towns don't have the first and second tranche. They got all their money.
Right.
So what they have is from there.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on this? Okay. First of all, I'm going to call for the vote on the amendment that Jim made to put the funding, we'll back up to the original. Do, okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Do, okay, all those in favor of the amendment? We, all those opposed to the amendment? So, Jim's amendment fails, okay? So, now I'm going to call for the vote on the manager's, the recommendation as were presented to us. Is all those in favor of the manager's recommendation? Okay, five and O. Boy, that put me, that made me work. Okay, oh, okay.
A tough job. Someone's got to do it, right?
That's a tough job, I'm telling you, yes. It's a good thing. The next is item number 22-035, approval of the Sixth Amendment to Jail Health Services Agreement between Armour Correction Health Service, Inc. and Cumberland County, we're using opera funds. With Jim, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. As you can imagine, and I think we've all been waiting for this day, we have a health service agreement with Armour Medical to perform medical services down at the jail. And Armour is not immune to what is happening, happening in the healthcare field nationally, where staff shortages are plaguing service delivery and those staff that they are able to have underemployment, they have to pay a fair wage to, or that little staff will leave for a better job because everyone's crying for help, especially in the healthcare industry. And there's some big money being thrown around for salaries in the healthcare industry. We have been in conversations with Armour and our consultant, Dana, concerning the pay scale of the employees in the different classifications down at the jail. We have had a number of employees that have left for significant dollars difference between what we were paying and what their new job is paying. And it really made Alex and I really expand the conversation on what does this look like and what do we need to do to fix it to get ourselves in the ballpark of, of market, really? And so over the last number of weeks, Alex and I and Dana have worked through, Dana and who has in turn worked with Armour, to see what different pay scales look like. And we started off at 50%, 75th percentile and 90th percentile for the classifications that are in your packets this evening. And we looked at it and we felt as though we did it higher than 70, but we thought that maybe it could be too much of a budget impact if we went 90. So, we asked Dana to go back and provide us an 80th percentile number and so that we could consider that. Ultimately, those numbers came in acceptable to both Alex and I, and we brought those forward with the commissioners to amend the, the contract, I think it's called the Sixth Amendment to the Health Service Agreement. And what that includes is a number of pay raises for different jobs, and I'll just name a couple of them, registered nurse, certified medical assistant, dentist, dental assistant, social worker, psychiatric nurse practitioner, behavioral health director, health administrator. So, those, those would be those that would benefit from a pay raise. Also, outside of this medical classification, we have a unique situation where, I'm going to watch, his classification is called health service administrator, actually, no, physician. Physician, which is also known as the medical director. That individual by contract works six hours for us, right? Six hours a week for us. However, due to the shortage that they have had down at the jail, this individual has been pulling approximately 32 hours. And as you can see, his salary is $82.50. So, paying $82.50 per hour at six hours and paying it for 32 hours is quite a bit of difference there. However, we felt as though he was filling a valuable hole. If they are short-staffed and he is willing to put additional hours in, how can, how are we in the position of saying no? However, we were not able to go and place him into the 80th percentile based on the shared fact that that would be, this is really a short time, hopefully, item, and we wanted to provide some increase in salary for this individual, but not have it memorialized through a longstanding contract that shifts a lot of salaries. So, we're bringing it through the recitals in the agreement that talk about moving him from six to 32 on a temporary basis and that we look at getting back into conversations around this if things change down at the jail or this individual decides to retire. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. So, this item is ready for discussion and hopefully acceptance by the commissioners this evening. Alex and I are here to answer your questions, and I think if it goes beyond our pay grade, the sheriff is here that can give you on the floor answers to any of the questions that you have, including the medical down at the jail. So, I'd ask for authorize, authorization to sign the Sixth Amendment, and that concludes my presentation.
Do we?
For purposes of discussion, I move that we accept the proposed law set forth in the Sixth Amendment and the attachments thereto.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Gordon?
I, I think this is a perfect example of how fluid the market is. And we're going to be back for the Seventh and Eighth and Ninth Amendment. What I would suggest here, I'd like to maybe toss out here is, why don't we allow the manager to raise compensation up to the 80th percentile of market with notification to the commissioner? Because it's just going to continue, continue, continue. And if it means being able to do that and save somebody so you don't have to go to the marketplace and try to pull somebody back in again, it's an opportunity. I just throw that out as an idea.
Do I have a second on that?
My second is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion on what?
I mean, I, I look at this and I think the market is fluid and, and we are, we just are, I think, coming out of the long night of trying to keep the jail staffed with correctional professionals, and lo and behold, you pay more, you get more people that are interested, and you keep, keep the people. I mean, I'm, I think you're, if, if, if staff thinks that this will help us out, do the trick for the, for the moment, I would certainly support these, certainly support these numbers.
Commissioner Claudia?
I'm probably not against this, whatever the answer to my question is, but I, I couldn't quite figure out what the contractual relationship is and where this amendment fits into an existing contract, if there was one, that would otherwise govern this. Anybody can jump in there?
So, we have the existing contract with them. The reason this is being treated as a separate amendment is to enable us to bill it separately for opera purposes, as opposed to it being to an amendment to the overall contract. So, for opera purposes is why we're keeping it separate, similar to what we did on the vaccination incentive with them, where we kept that as a separate number as well.
If this were not, if this were refused, then there's a contract and the contract has the previous, has the now existing compensation basis.
Exactly. So, that would be the base, the base contract, and this is a tack on to it.
Slavery was abolished, I guess, so I mean, if the market says we got to do this, then I think we have.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yeah, I, with Alex's comments there, are, what do we do when we run out of opera funds?
This is going to be a cost that we're going to have to keep bouncing budgets up to, to meet. It is not, in the grand scheme of the jail, you know, an order of magnitude bigger, for example, but yes, in the future, this is one we're going to have to address down the road and probably do a step down as we go on this one. We have not had as much time, to be honest, to go back and forth on this one. This came up very suddenly, less than a month ago, and we sort of had to fight to get this just to you because time is of the essence on this particular one. But yes, this will cause a future budget hit, assuming that there isn't a correction in the market. There's just a lot of uncertainty right now in this particular field.
So, so what you're saying is that it'll, it'll go into the county budget?
Eventually, yes.
Sheriff, do you have any, do you have anything that you'd like to say on this? I'm sorry, Neil.
That's right.
Yes, I, I support this. This is our biggest vulnerability. We have a sick population in the jail. They're down, last I knew, seven to eight RNs. They're hiring people as per diems, but they're, the RNs are chasing their next best deal. We've had a hard time hiring a psychiatric nurse practitioner. We had somebody onboard and they stayed long enough to get a better job, they paid better, they moved on. Dr. Vore, who's our physician, phenomenal guy, you know, quite frankly, I think he's been working 32 hours since COVID started because of the fact that every time we had a pop-up. He lives in Western Massachusetts. He was driving in and jumping on calls on weekends, late at night. Lately, we've had people in the hospital. He's checking every morning and every evening, sending out emails of the status of those individuals. So, money well spent with Dr. Vore. I can tell you that at the last MAC meeting, which we have every three months with a contract monitor, the health services administrator was looking at me, you know, saying that we're down on people, we can't afford to hire people. And I told him afterwards, I go, we can't hire corrections officers, I can't fix your problem as well. So, I think this moves towards fixing that. Like Jim mentioned, there's some traveling nurses making some unbelievable money. And I, I think this will help. I'm not sure it's going to be the panacea, that's all. I'd like to think it is.
Commissioner Jameson and then Commissioner Claudia?
And I, this is directed towards Alex and Jim. Do you believe that this will be a sufficient solution, at least for the temporary? Or is that, I guess what I'm saying is that, are these raises going to get us through the year, let's get it through this budget? Or is this sort of a shot in the, educated shot in the dark? Because we don't really know if, what the market will bear, if people are going to leave, whether it's visiting nurses or not. I guess what data do we rely on to think that this would be sufficient for at least the foreseeable near future?
I'll jump in there, I guess. So, Armour is regularly doing salary surveys and keeping an eye on it. And certainly what we found when we did this most recent ones, that we had gone from being up in the.
Leave the 75th percentile range six months ago or so, not that long ago, and we'd already dropped down significantly. This is to get us back up there? We don't have a chance.
It's no different than any other rapidly changing market. Does it keep on going up or does it stabilize or does it go back down?
We really.
Very cloudy crystal all right now.
That's what I thought.
One of the tools that we did use was, it came from Armour, Armour Health, and it's a salary assessor, giving us the classifications, and we're at 50, what, 10, 25th, the mean, 80th and 90th percentile. So, that kind of gave us, you know, not what our region is, but what, what the greater region is paying for salaries. So, you can only go on the information that you have at the time that you're considering it.
Certainly.
Especially in this field where it's ever-changing.
Commissioner Claudia, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually, completely related, I think, to what Neil was just, I was hoping we could have an update, assuming this is going to pass, have an update in 90 days of actual outcomes. And the category, I've never, there, heard a discouraging word. I'm sure everybody here knows that there's a new virus variant out there that is apparently slowly rising and is, and detected in, at least in the subject analysis that's done by Maine CDC. We could, you know, we could add them all around.
Commissioner Gordon and then.
To add validity as to, or more substance of why we've got to stay on top of this and why we should, it is so fluid, you've got to remember that this, this industry and the people that are there, this is not a regional market anymore. It's national. People are going all over the country. So, we've, we, I don't know where the 80%, when you say it's a regional thing, if you did it for the national market, I, I don't have any idea what those figures would be like. But that's, that's part of the issue.
Commissioner Coward?
I just, just briefly on to do the bright side of the new, new strain of the pandemic, we've been approved for a fourth, second booster, I guess, so four, series of four now. So, so maybe that'll help us out. Maine has been very, parts of Maine have been very good about getting vaccinated, and it, I think the results are, the results show that we're, we're doing the right thing.
If there's no further discussion, I will call for vote, with those all in favor of this. Okay, this passes. Okay, now, moving on to newer business, item 22-036, approval of the community development 2022 to 2026, five-year consolidated plan, which includes the updated citizens' participation plan and the 2022 annual action plan. I'll turn this over to you and then you can turn it over.
Excuse me, come here. May I ask, ask a question on the last motion?
Yeah.
I assume that what Jim suggested about a third, a 90-day?
Oh, with 90-day.
It will, is part of them? Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Jim, I'm turning that over to you.
Thank you. This item is coming forward because it is that time that every five years, the county needs to submit a five-year consolidated plan, the tribunal of housing and urban development. On top of the five-year plan development, the CPG office has also gone through the appropriate steps for the annual action plan, which is the plan that dictates how this year's funding is going to be allocated out of the project. So, I'd like to ask Kristen Stiles to come up and present the five-year plan and the annual action plan for the county. This item is first reading, and we're going to set the May meeting for a second reading and final action because we then need to get all these plans down to HUD Manchester for approval by May 15. So, it's all yours, Kristen. Hopefully, I didn't take too much of the wind out of your sails.
No, that was great. That was a perfect summary of what, what we're here for. As, as you know, every April and May, we come and present to you our annual action plan, and we do our first reading in April and the final reading in May. And as just, Jim just mentioned, every five years, we come and do a five-year consolidated plan. If you're looking at it going, how's 2022 to 2026, five years, HUD counts each one individually, so it's 2022, 2023, 24, 25 and 26. So, that is the five years. If you do math, then you're getting only four. So, for our five-year consolidated plan, what HUD does is they provide a template for us of how they would like us to do this plan. And the first piece of that template is doing a needs assessment and market analysis here in Cumberland County of what the big needs are within our communities and a market analysis of what the economic situation here is in Cumberland County. As you know, there have been lots of these studies going on, especially during the pandemic, and our findings are not very different than any other set of findings for Cumberland County. What we have realized is housing is a big issue, homelessness is a big issue, mental health and substance use is a big issue, and for our market analysis, the big issue is there's a shortage of workers, which is exactly. And for our market analysis, the big issue is there's a shortage of workers, which is exactly what you have been talking about all night tonight. So, there were no huge takeaways in our market analysis that are going to affect our strategic plan for the next five years. When we're looking at our strategic plan, we're keeping the goals of the CDBG program overall in our mind. And those goals are really to help low and moderate income individuals and to help areas that are predominantly low and moderate income individuals live. So, looking at our strategic plan, which is the next section of our five-year consolidated plan, we set a list of goals and priorities. And with these goals and priorities, it's what we want to do with our funding for those next five years. Aaron Shapiro, from the start of this program, has had this thought that if you try and prioritize and get really specific, you're gonna end up cutting out some communities or prioritizing one community over another. And the example that I like to use is that the needs of Harpswell, the population living in Harpswell, are very different with the population living in Westbrook. So the goal is to make our, our plan, our goals and priorities as broad as possible and still have them meet the CDBG rules and criteria, but yet make it so that there's no project that could come forward that we wouldn't, that wouldn't fall under one of our goals. So, the goals that we have chosen to keep, the municipal oversight committee has chosen to keep for the next five years are very general. So we want to support and create the rehabilitation of affordable housing. We want to create and improve public services available in Cumberland County. Those are specifically for low and moderate income individuals. We want to create and improve public infrastructure and facilities. We want to support economic development, and we want to support community planning projects. Before I move forward, does anyone have any questions about those five, five goals? Yes?
This funding priority, this is for CDBG programs?
Correct.
Not, not ARPA?
Not ARPA, just CDBG and, and home. But our, our home program is very specific, it's, it's affordable housing, so it, that's what the goal is, is affordable housing. It's kind of given to us.
Is there any significant change in those rather general goals from five years ago?
Nope, and five years before that, they were exactly the same as well. So, the wording has changed slightly. So, it used to just, at one point was just affordable housing. And now it's support the creation and rehabilitation of affordable housing, but no, the, the goal itself has not, not changed. Another piece of this plan is our citizen participation plan. And as you know, for the past two years, our citizen participation plan has needed to shift a little bit, the same way that all citizen participation has needed to shift during a pandemic. So, the updated plan, the big changes in the plan are just adding that wording that has happened on a state level and on a national level, saying that during a state of an emergency, we're gonna do our very best to inform everybody of what's going on and kind of switch how we inform people of what's going on using more digital forms than in the past. In the past, there was kind of a requirement to have, like, our plans posted at a library. Well, if the libraries are closed, nobody has access to the plan. Whereas nowadays, most people have access to the internet, and so posting our plan online makes a lot more sense than putting it at a library. So we will still continue to give it to all of our municipalities, to have the plans available for all of our municipalities. But we're posting it online, and it pretty much, our updates to the citizen participation plan say that we're gonna follow all state and county rules when it comes to how we're gonna inform the public of hearings, how the public are gonna participate in our hearings, and how they're gonna make public comment on things like our five-year citizen participation pla, or our five-year consolidated plan, our CAPR that we turn in at the end of the year, and our annual action plan. So that is pretty much our five-year consolidated plan. We go through what our needs are, our goal, our market analysis for the area, what our big goals are for how we want to spend the money for the next five years. And then the final part of our five-year consolidated plan is looking at our annual action plan. And that annual action plan piece of it is a little bit tricky this year because we have not actually received our budget from HUD. So, Congress has passed a budget, and they did this in March. The budget has a small decrease for home, for, for CDBG nationally and a small increase for our home program nationally. How that works out in the formula of what we're gonna get, we still don't know. Nationally, it's about a 4% decrease for CDBG and a 1.5% increase for home. But again, we don't know what that comes out to for us. They have six, HUD has 60 days after it's passed by Congress to give us our final budget. So they have until sometime in mid-May to give the, us that budget, but I know they're trying to expedite the process because we are supposed to turn in our plans by May 15th. So I'm hoping, yeah. It puts us in a tricky situation. So I'm hoping that by our May meeting, we will, well, before our May meeting, we will have a final numbers to tie on to each of our funding recommendations. But what we did at the county level, as well as in South Portland and in Bridgeton, is putting little contingency plans, because we know our budget is gonna be very similar. It's just gonna go most likely down just a little bit. So we have put in contingency plans of what's gonna be cut or cut across the board for, what's gonna be cut if, if we do actually get a decrease, which we, we're expecting some level of decrease. So for our annual action plan, the budget that you have there in your packet is just our estimated budget using the exact same numbers we had last year, which is what we do every year. We rarely ever get a budget far enough in advance for our committees to, to use the correct budget, so we always follow the year before. We are estimating one, a little over 1.5 million in funding. Of that 1.5 million, we are putting 759,000 towards countywide projects through our CDBG competitive application process that we release every year in December. And then we have our two set-aside communities of Bridgeton and South Portland. Bridgeton's allocation, we're expecting that to be about 200,000, and South Portland's to be about 440,000. We use the same formula allocation that we've been using since the start of the program to do these two set-aside communities. They follow their own application process of releasing their own applications, and the county releases our own application. We bring them all together here at the end and present them to you. So, the whole program is up to you all, but South Portland and Bridgeton have voted on their own piece of it. So, our process has not changed. We're not planning to change the process. It works fairly well. And I haven't come across any process from talking with colleagues that works better than our process, so I, I don't see a need to change it for our next five years. The scoring criteria will also not be changing. The scoring criteria is in your packet as well. This year, we had released our, our applications in November. Pre-applications were due in December. The point of the pre-application is just to make sure that none of our municipalities waste their time working on a very complex HUD application that isn't eligible. So we wanna, we wanna work with them to make sure everything that they're turning in is gonna work for our program. And then our final applications are due in January. Once those final applications come in, we have the municipal oversight committee has a review team, and that review team is made up of members of the various communities within Cumberland County. They read and thoroughly review all of those applications, score them for us, and then present their recommendations to us. We're in a, a little bit of a unique situation this year. And I, I reached out to some colleagues at the City of Portland and other places that there's so many funding sources out there, that this year we did not receive enough applications in the development category, which is our, our huge chunk of money, to cover all of, we do not receive enough applications for what we're expecting our allocation to be, which means that there's a gap in how much money we have, but we need to allocate all of, all of our money before we can send our, our application to our, 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 our plan to HUD. So, what we, the municipal oversight committee has decided to do, after talking with HUD, is the same thing that City of Portland is actually doing, and Lewiston and Auburn. They are, we're creating a pot of money of 156,000 or whatever our final allocation ends up being, to help fund prior-year CDBG projects that now have a gap in their funding due to construction increases. So, as we all know, the cost of construction projects have gone up greatly. And because of this, we have projects that are coming in with bids that are three, four times higher than what they were expecting the original bid for the construction project to be. So we've decided to set aside this money and have that as, as a project until we know what those programs are and we can fund those. I am hoping, if this is a little bit confusing, I'm hoping to have all of those numbers clearly laid out for you by our May meeting, once we have our final allocation. So that should be a, a little bit helpful. In, in the applications that we got, the majority of our projects are going to regional programs. We have housing programs for $145,000, and then we have a few public service programs. This year, we didn't get as many public service programs as we usually get. My guess is they all already applied for ARPA, which is a lot more money, and decided to not come after our CDBG funds. And there's, there's just a lot of other funding sources out there that are easier to use than our CDBG funds. So, the final piece I want to bring up to you is in your packet. There is a sheet that looks like this, and it has all of the, the proposed allocations on it. We got a total of 29 projects that we plan to fund this year, if all the funds become available. If, if our funding is cut a little bit short, the plan is still to fund all 29 of these projects. Just some of the public service ones and development ones will be at a slightly lower dollar amount. Probably a 4%-ish decrease than what you see on this sheet here. But again, I'm hoping by our May meeting to have those final numbers for you. The last piece is our home program, so all of this was for CDBG. Our home program, as I said earlier, we're expecting a slight increase in the level of funding. We also have received quite a bit of program income this past year for our program. So usually we get about 350 to 400,000 in home funds for us to allocate. And this year, because we're getting 145,000 in program income, we will have 500 and, roughly 530,000 that we're gonna be able to put towards affordable housing development projects. We release the application after Maine Housing releases their QAP for the Lytech program. The reason we do this is because the majority of projects that we end up funding are projects that are also going to apply to the state's low-income housing tax credit program. And we want to make sure that our program is aligning with their program in order to maximize the number of points that the developers in Cumberland County can get on their application so that we can maximize the amount of affordable housing that gets built here. So we are hoping to get the application out, now that Maine Housing is in the final stages of their QAP sometime early May, and we will get those applications back and done before they need to turn it into Maine Housing over the summer.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to answer any questions. I know it's, it's a lot of information that I just threw at you.
Kristin, just a, a quick question on the, when you, the breakdown of the projects, it has County Habitat for Humanity, $90,000. Is there a specific, is that gonna be over all the County Habitat for Humanity projects? Or how is that gonna be allocated?
So, it is a critical rehab program, so what they do is any house in Cumberland County other than Brunswick and the City of Portland will be able to apply to have home repairs done to their home. So, the program started in 2020, and it's been quite successful. The number of applications that they're receiving is just continuing to increase as, as they're coming in. The size of the projects is also changing quite a bit. During the pandemic, they were only doing exterior work, and now they are going into homes to do interior work as well. So at the beginning, we saw a lot of, like, deck repairs, roof repairs, siding, things like that, windows. And now we're seeing more interior repairs as well. One thing I really like about what Habitat for Humanity is doing, Sandy Warren had actually, had started this for us, is getting all of the organizations in Cumberland County that do any type of home repair, including Alpha One, which we often fund every other year for ramps, getting them all in this, on the same room, virtual room, so that everybody knew what other programs were out there and what everyone else was offering, so that we could say, you know, you shouldn't be going to Habitat for a ramp, you should be going over to Alpha One. You won't pay anything here, then we can send you to Community Concepts to do more weatherization and then send you here to, to do this, so that we can maximize those dollars and get the most projects done for, for low-income homeowners here in Cumberland County.
Okay, thank you, Kristin.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Seeing no other, I would need a, I need a motion on this?
No, it's first reading, right?
Oh, that's right, it's a first reading, that's right.
Thank you.
I thought it was May. Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, you can ask.
I think the second, second reading is also a public hearing, right?
Pardon?
Second reading is a public hearing?
Yes, so this, this one is a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak, as well as the, the second hearing is a public hearing. So we'll have two public hearings on this.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, item number 22-020, the authorization of the sheriff's office to accept the Violence Against Women grant through These Doors to reimburse up to 50% of the current detective position from 2022 to 2024. Do you want me to just turn this over to Kevin, or?
Please.
Kevin, Sheriff Kevin, yes.
Thank you. Last year, we were approached by Through These Doors. They wanted to apply for a Violence Against Women's Act grant. For the last several years, our, our agency has worked, actually for the last 12 years, our agency's worked with Through These Doors to better coordinate the follow-up investigations of domestic violence cases. We also meet with them on a quarterly basis to go over various key domestic violence cases, to make sure that we're doing everything correct, see if there's any training needs, policy changes, et cetera. So, last year, they approached us and they wanted to add at least another half a person to do follow-up investigations on domestic violence. We, through a contract, have somebody assigned to the district attorney's office doing follow-ups. But for the last three years, this committee has basically said that we kind of need to start looking at additional, because unfortunately, domestic violence is not going down, it's going up. The last 19 years, there have been 202 homicides, 48% of them were domestic violence-related. From 2020 to 2021, we saw an increase just in the areas that we patrol, of 10% increase in domestic violences. And I can tell you that I've written letters for Naples, North Dymath, and Harpswell and Harrison. In all four towns, they've seen an increase in domestic violence, so it's everywhere. This grant will allow us to take one detective that's in-house now and assign them for 50% of the time doing domestic violence follow-ups. Now the question is, what is, you know, did that person just have 50% of his time vacant that we could do? No. This is an important crime, this is crimes against people. So that individual will have to focus on crimes against people and domestic violence, and some of the property crimes will have to just take a backseat for the time being. What this grant does is allow us to take that detective that's already on your payroll and will get reimbursed for the 50% over the next three years, which will be about 150,000 for us and 150,000 from the grant. Again, this is a commitment that we're willing to do because unfortunately, domestic violence is not going down, it's going up. And we can't afford not to take a better look at this and try to be better at it. I'll answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the sheriff's office? Do we have any questions for the Sheriff's Office?
Move passage.
Second.
With no further discussion, I call for vote. Is all those in favor?
Yeah.
It passes. Okay. The next item is twenty-two dash oh-three-seven. Kevin, I guess you will back up for the approval of the bid with the quirk on with the vehicles.
So, this is the annual purchase vehicles. They have been budgeted in the 2022 calendar year. This has been a struggle due to supply chain issues. As you can imagine, I think the last vehicle rolled out of the shop today that we ordered in February of 2021. So, getting the equipment, getting the cars, has been real difficult. Last year, we went with the four-wheel-drive Explorer, because quite frankly, the Chevy Tahoe that was the preferred vehicle went out to re, they redesigned it, for lack of a better term. And when the price came back, we hadn't budgeted for what they cost. So, we're going to this Ford Explorer, which seems to be working out for the deputies. A little smaller vehicle, but I haven't heard too many complaints. So, really, this is just paying for, or authorizing the bid to quirk for the vehicles, with the exception of the CID vehicle, which would be Casco Bay Ford. No, my mistake. It would be quirk for all of them, and that fits within our budget.
Do we have any discussion for the Sheriff? I call for.
Oh, we need a motion. I move that we approve the allocation of the funds as described by the Sheriff and set forth in our materials.
Do I have a second? Second by Steve. If no further discussion, I call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Right, you might as well stay there, Kevin. I think you're up again.
I'm catching the honor of the pattern.
I guess so. The next is twenty-two is oh thirty-eight. Approval of the Sheriff's Office to accept the grant of forty-five hundred and match requirement for the training in the out, in the call-out with grant.
So, this is a fairly new concept for the Bureau of Highway Safety in that they're funding training, specifically the out-of-state training, as well as some call-outs at a conference for one of our sergeants, partially. The drug recognition program is something that started in the 1990s. I had the luxury of being the second class. And at that time, they took us to New York City because at the time, we would go to the jail, which was right next door here, and try to do testing on people that were on medications. And it wasn't really real life. In New York City, we got our tests done in three or four days. They've kept this going. This year, one of our candidates that just passed a grueling test to get certified will be going down to Florida to get the testing. Now, the question is why, I mean, with all the drug substance uses around here, why would you take them out of state? We got a bullet in the other day from Armor that there's a new synthetic opioid out floating around, and it's very prevalent in Florida. And unfortunately, Maine is the other state where it's floating around. It is two, twenty to a hundred times more potent than fentanyl. Now, mind you, fentanyl, a little fentanyl will kill you. So, twenty to a hundred times more, you know. So, not that this individual is going to go down and possibly see anybody on this new opiate called ISO, but they're going to be exposed to drugs that we may not see a lot of prevalence here. The drug recognition program is basically set up so that if an officer stops somebody and they're impaired, and there's obvious impairment, but then they take him in, and they can't get a point oh eight or more out of the blood alcohol, then they call in a drug recognition expert. There's about fifty to seventy-five of them statewide. And that individual will come in and put the individual through a battery of tests that go further. And basically, what that will do is the officer, the DRE, will then say, the individual, based on what I'm seeing, is under the influence of alcohol and another drug. We call it poly-drug use, or maybe three drugs, et cetera. So, this is a key certification. We've got, I think this individual is going to be our third one, maybe our fourth one. We've inherited a couple through other agencies that we've hired them on, and they've come with their drug recognition expert certification. So, this grant will pay for him, travel expenses down to Florida, to get that done. There's some call-outs that it will pay for. In other words, if we don't have a DRE on staff, usually, we call around to some other agencies. See if they have one reasonably available. If they don't, then we call somebody out. It will cover some of the overtime there. And then Sergeant Feeney, who oversees the program and does a lot of the testing for the drug recognition program, there's a conference to be determined, and it will pay for a portion of his going to that conference as well. So, this is money well spent, especially with the idea that we have so much substance use out there. There's a lot of poly-drug use out there, and these individuals can take the individual off, the impaired motorist off the road. When, if you didn't have this program, they would be completely impaired. You'd get a blood alcohol level that's less than point oh eight, and you'd have to basically let them go or find a driving-to-endanger charge or something. So, this is very critical for us and the state.
Do we have any questions?
Does Portland PD have a, have a home program for this?
I think they do. I know when I was doing it, they did. And they did a fair amount of the training as well.
I move passage.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
If no further discussion, I call for vote. All those in favor? And it passes. Okay. Well, moving on. Item twenty-two dash oh-three-nine, proclamation for May first through May seventh, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week. Jim?
Thank you. This is a new proclamation for the commissioners to consider, and that is a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week. As the commissioners are aware, you annually do a proclamation for Corrections Officer Week, or Telecommunicators Week, or Community Development Week, or Law Enforcement Week. And that's a fair share of our employees within our organization. However, this proclamation covers everyone else. So, everyone has to be inclusive. And so, this is something that the state of Maine has been doing for a number of years as a proclamation. And in our conversations with the managers around the county, we all thought that this would be something that we should be adopting and recognizing the individuals who haven't been picked up by another proclamation or a special week, to recognize them too. Because it takes many hands to do the work and provide the services in government. And we just want to take an opportunity to thank everyone, and this does achieve just that. So, I'd ask that you recognize the public service employees for May first through May seventh of this year. Thank you.
I have a question. Will we be doing anything? Or whether we have anything planned?
We don't have anything planned just yet. But that's not to say that in two and a half weeks, we can do something.
Okay. Yeah. I call for, I need a second. Okay. Do we have any other further discussion? Seeing none, I call for vote. All those in favor? With the next one, twenty-two dash oh forty, proclamation for May first through May seventh, 2022, as National Correctional Officers Week.
Again, the same week as the previous proclamation. This is for National Corrections Officer Week. This is an annual recognition for the work that the corrections officers down in our jail do on a day-to-day basis. And we just want to, again, bring this forward and thank them for all the hard work, especially in the times that they're working in, short-staffed, and really, we're asking them to do a lot. And so, we're bringing this proclamation forward in hopes of the commissioners approving, and we'll share it with the corrections officers in the days to come. So, thank you.
I move we approve the proclamation as drafted.
Do I have a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I call for vote. All those in favor? When is National Law Enforcement Week?
May I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
What's the status of the number of correction officers that we're down? You got any idea?
I usually use the barometer of how many corrections offices I see their paperwork leaving and how many they're coming on. And I really haven't seen too much of either. Maybe one over the last month, month and a half. I will say that the Sheriff's Office has just recently brought on two. I think they're both bluepens. Kevin?
Yeah, actually, three. I was going to actually read.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, I won't steal your thunder.
No, no.
No, that's, yep.
Corrections officers, I think, were pretty much neutral at this point over the last, at least last month, month and a half.
But we're still.
Still down. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Kevin, you can, if you want to update us?
So, yeah, for law enforcement, we've been lucky in that in the last two weeks, three weeks, we've hired three bluepens. So, we're still down. Right now, four people. We have one individual that's going to retire in April. So, that's five. So, we're doing pretty good law enforcement-wise compared to some of our colleagues locally and nationwide. So, that's good news. We're still trying to get law enforcement officers. Corrections officers, we've hired about twelve since last September. There are five going through the academy that started on March twenty-eighth. We have a bunch of people on the pipeline, hopefully, to get them on for the next academy, which I think is around May thirty-first. And then, there's a big gap. So, we're hoping that we can get some folks there. The downside is, I just accepted a retirement notice today, or yesterday, today, over the weekend, for an individual that's going to retire effective, I think, later this month, if not the first of May. So, we're up a little bit, but not great. Some of the things that are really our Achilles' heel, I got to tell you, I mentioned a little bit earlier. Since mid to late January, we've been doing hospital details, you know, where we've had to have an officer at various hospitals continuously, in addition to everything we're doing. And that's put a real drain. And some of the individuals, we've been able to get released because they were on low charges. We had one individual who was in for homicide, and that was a challenge. But I will say that he, based on his medical condition, the Attorney General worked with us on that. So, we kind of go over that. But then, we have another individual that's in on some pretty hefty charges, pretty hefty bail. We were able to get him on a bracelet, but today, he tried to walk out. So, we're back on him. And then, in addition to this, DOC called us the day before an individual was going to be released, telling us that there was a warrant for his arrest under Massachusetts. He's fighting extradition, which means we have to get a governor's warrant, which means that it doesn't happen very quickly. And we've been a one-on-one, one officer watching him for about a month now, because this guy does not want to go back to Massachusetts and is threatening to kill himself. So, the alternative is, is there's no alternative. We've got to watch this guy. So, when you talk about corrections officer stress, it's everything that we have described in the past, plus these two details that are just taxing the heck out of the folks. So, these are the things that really, you folks, the public, the legislature, doesn't understand that, you know, one of these pops up, you know, if, God forbid, this guy has an opportunity because he doesn't want to go back to Massachusetts, we'll be explaining what we did to prevent that. So, this has been unusual, three or four months, in that it's just drained us, the medical and the, this one-on-one. My plan is, I met today, is to send the Attorney General's Office call and see if we can move this other guy. Even if I have to put him under my cruiser and drive him to Massachusetts. I mean, it is draining our staff. So, that's really the four-on-one on hiring and staffing at the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office.
Do we have any questions to the Sheriff? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay. Moving on. Comments from the county manager. Jim, it's you.
I just have one this evening, and that is recognition. As you all know, this week is National Telecommunicators Week. You passed the proclamation during the March meeting. As part of their week's events, they have, the National Emergency Number Association has an award ceremony, which took place this afternoon. And we were fortunate enough to have some recognition within our communications department. The first recognition that I want to relay is that Erin Walt in the Regional Communications received the Silent Hero Award from this organization for her seven years and advanced through the supervisor and chair of the Fire Department Working Group. Her working relationship with our partnering agencies is top-notch. Erin is also credited numerous times by field training offices that the work under her leadership. She has also been in charge of the department's policies and procedures for the past four years. Erin doesn't ask for any recognition or fair fare. She just does it because it's her passion and because she takes pride in her work. So, congratulations, Erin. We have the Supervisor of the Year for the state of Maine, and that is Scotty Franklin. Scotty achieved the ultimate honor this year by being nominated from every level of personnel at the center. Supervisor Franklin is incredibly reliable and dependable, using no sick leave in 2021, and working over nine-hundred hours of overtime to help minimize forces. With over seventeen years of experience at the center, Scotty is incredibly knowledgeable. She is the rock during hard times. This year required we all give it all we had, and Scotty did. Late nights, countless conversations about how to navigate the schedule in an employee-first way, how and when to deliver bad news, et cetera. Scotty was there for all of us. And then, lastly, a team of individuals from the Communication Center, including Scotty Franklin, Rachel Beal, Jack Bueller, Sam King, Nicole Dexter, Allison Labonte, and Jennifer Skinner, all were nominated for Critical Incident of the Year, or received Critical Incident of the Year Award. And it was just before the shift on, shift change on February thirteenth, 2021, Jennifer Skinner took a call from Sanford Regional Communications in reference to a carjacking that had just occurred. The deputy turned on the suspect vehicle. A Signal one thousand was put out, and the suspect fled going the wrong way through a busy rotary. Hitting a dead end, the suspect put his vehicle in reverse to attempt to slam into the cruiser. GOROM PD, Main State Police, and York County SO all assisted in the twenty-three-mile pursuit that finally ended in Gorham. The teamwork, quick thinking, and knowledgeable dispatches assured that other side of the radar had exactly what they needed to safely apprehend the suspect while keeping the public safe as well. So, congratulations all for a job well done. And I think just those three narratives really speaks volumes to the talent that we have up at that Regional Communication Center. They, there is a lot of strongly dedicated individuals and good employees that we have running the service to nineteen communities across the county, including the Sheriff's Office. So, congratulations and happy telecommunications week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the executive staff? That was Alex.
Hi. We'll take a pass tonight.
Okay. Catherine, do you have anything to say? Travis? Okay. Wow. Boy, this is good. Comments from the county or commissioners? Commissioner Howard?
I have nothing this evening. I'm just enjoying being back at work after being on vacation, and I'm still savoring the last bits of that little bit of freedom.
Commissioner Cludia?
I just have noticed in the city of Portland, all of a sudden, that no, no road is open to free traffic. And one of the primary reasons is because a company called Consolidated Communications is apparently stringing wire for an internet-related purpose. And I was hoping that at some point, when Travis is back in the broadband business, which he seems to get into every once in a while, he could come up to do one of them.
Commissioner Gordon?
I have nothing this evening.
Commissioner Jameson?
Yeah, just very briefly, want to. Yeah, just very briefly, want to indicate that all the families out there, April school vacation is coming up, and so we wish you and your family well. And to that point, there'll be a lot of children, weather is warmer, people are outside, there'll be a lot of people, you know, frolicking about, so let's just be careful and cautious with the extra children on the sidewalks, on the roads, et cetera. Spring sports will be starting, middle school, high school, so we want to wish our best to all of the youth out there in competition, and that because it won't happen until after our next meeting, I want to wish all the mothers out there a happy Mother's Day. Thank you, and that's it.
Yeah. I just have a question for the sheriff. Is National Law Enforcement Day? I don't, I didn't see that.
May 15th.
Oh, May 15th?
Yeah, it's, the week is, spans the 15th.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't have anything else. If nobody else does, I call for a motion to adjourn. Maybe we can take five minutes and then go into workshop.
So move.
Go into workshop, right? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
It's on my calendar. Yeah.
Is all those in favor to adjourn? Okay, gotcha.
Huh? No.